For you. Ten minutes are allowed for the applicant to address the commission. After the applicant is finished, three minutes are allowed for anyone else who wishes to address the commission. A member of the public is here representing a specific interest group such as a home arts association. I believe someone has let us know about this. When addressing the commission, please provide your name, address, and the nature of the interest in the contract. After public comment, the applicant or the representative may request a two-minute response. For speakers in the auditorium, a timer device near the projector screen will sorry. A timer device at the podium will display an amber light thirty seconds before the expiration of the allotted time and a red light upon expiration of the allotted time. When the public hearing is closed, the planning commission will proceed to discuss the items. We have no additional public comments unless we request clarification or have some questions. Exhibits may be displayed by the applicants or public at the podium. Written correspondence received by noon yesterday has been forwarded to us and is part of the public record. Any additional written materials to be placed into the record must be read during public comment within a two-minute two-minute time limit. Please direct your comments to the planning commission and not the applicants. Please refrain from applauding or cheering any of the speakers. And finally, please note that we are live, so turn off or silence your cell phones. That's can I have a motion to introduce the staff reports to me?
Someone?
Second.
Second, all in favor? The have a motion to approve the minutes from February. It's like, all right, did you get the second seat?
No. Gary.
Second.
All right. All in favor? May Court's? Do we have anything for May Court's?
We have nothing to present, but we could receive public comment if anybody has something along the block.
All right, is anybody here to speak about May Court's? All right, so moving to old business. Four fifty and four sixty Gaines School Road. Item number PD twenty twenty-four dash twelve dash two four eight two. Did I do that? I can't hear you.
All right, so this is PD for four fifty and four sixty Gaines Road. You have seen this once before, so this is the master version. So the request is to take a commercial office and RS fifteen split zone or two zones into a CN and RM two PD. There's also a future land use request change from Main Street Business and Traditional Neighborhood to only Main Street Business. There are two special use permit requests, which we'll talk a little bit about, and their request is to bring sixty-nine fee simple townhomes, ten accessory dwelling units, and around nine thousand seven hundred forty-five square feet of commercial across eight acres. There's also six waivers that are being requested. So this is the property. It is the hospital authority property. We have to the south, the Cedar Creek subdivision. We have along the north side, single-family homes and a commercial up front along Gaines School. On the back, we have some single-family homes as well. And then to the west, we have multifamily and duplexes all along the Gaines School area. So this is the future land use request, so essentially taking that traditional neighborhood off the back end and making the whole larger parcel four fifty Gaines School into Main Street. From a zoning perspective, it would be RM two PD for the majority of the properties with the commercial neighborhood being at the corner there. This is real quick, we'll go through the overlays. That is important thing. So we have two overlays that are here. We have the airport overlay and the Gaines School Road overlay. So the airport overlay, you have seen multiple times, has come through. Usually get recommendation from the airport authority. The Gaines School Road overlay, though, it's not one that we work with a lot. This is relatively unique here in Athens. Just talk a little bit about it before we move on. So the way that the overlay works is essentially the the use table that is in that section of code supersedes the baseline zoning. So as we'll see a little bit farther in presentation, we have sort of what that difference is. If there's something that the overlay does not address, the base zoning takes over for it. So that is why there is two special use requests within this. Hey, Mark, can you click it? All righty, so this is looking at the property from Gaines School. And then this is going down from the east side of the property. You can see some of the homes along the right there. Just out of frame on the right side, there is the commercial that is on Gaines School. This is the back of the property at that intersection. And then another view of the back of property. This was important for the preliminary. This shot specifically came up because of the stormwater of the area surrounding the the two properties in question and public works working through the fact that all of these homes surrounding it are substandard for stormwater and how the the request tonight also had to make sure that their stormwater was adequately dealt with in a way that would not impact any of these properties. So this is the table that is in the staff report. The reasoning for this to show is both parts of this, the RM and what's being requested, as well as how the Gaines School overlay supersedes some of those RM zoning requirements. So in a typical RM zone, you're allowed to have five thousand square feet for minimum lot size. However, in the Gaines School overlay, it's twenty thousand square feet. So in staff report and one of the waivers that the applicant requested, they requested amendments to the use table within the Gaines School overlay district. And their request was specifically to amend just that use table. So things that they did not request within that, the RM zoning will take over. However, these were the core things that that table addressed. So they have been, they've requested to go from sixteen units an acre up to twenty-four, which does bring it in line with the RM two base zoning that they're requesting. They have asked for a little bit more lot coverage for both the individual lots and the development as a whole. The maximum building height does not change. The commercial neighborhood zoning that is also being requested, you can go up to sixty-five feet. However, because this would be a binding plan, the commercial there would be stopped at that first level that is shown in the elevations. From a setback, it depends mostly on the townhomes, the ADUs, the and that commercial part of it. The conserve canopy was one that we needed to work through internally for a hot second. So the Gaines School overlay only references total canopy. It does not reference the conserve versus total that a normal project would do. So in this situation, there is no technical conserve canopy requirement for the Gaines School overlay. There is only a total canopy number that they need to get to. Typically, that overlay or that total canopy would be fifty percent. The applicant has requested to bring that up to fifty-five. And then in terms of landscaped area, essentially that same thing. So this is the plan as a whole. It's very similar to what you had saw the last time. Some of the changes we'll talk through in some of the conditions. But this is, for all intents and purposes, unchanged. And here is the rendering of the exact same thing. So this is the commercial that is being proposed, again, being a binding plan. This is what would need to be built. If something would change, they would need to come back to this body. It would be one floor. They suggest up to eight individual units or suites on the inside, but with it being a box right now, that's not really what is being focused on. It's more about that architecture. So this is an example of some of the three-story townhomes that are being proposed. All the three-story townhomes are in the interior of the property. So it's a little bit hard to see on on the projection here, but basically just the interior around the green space would be three stories. As we'll talk about a little bit later in the night with our future land use effort, this type of stepping down effect is something the future land use committee has been discussing pretty regularly. And so the reason why we start with this is three stories is that interior. Two stories is the exterior, everything that lines the essentially the property lines themselves, the exterior of both these properties. All of these are rear-loaded and through alley systems. And so on the bottom here, this is what you would see if you were on Sunnyside or Gaines School Road as an example. And then obviously stepping down to one story across the road on all sides with what the existing properties are there now. And these are the accessory dwelling units or an example of the, I believe, the three split version. So from a staff perspective, it is compatible with the twenty twenty-three comprehensive plan. It does increase supply and adds a variety of housing not common on the inside, on the east side. We do have townhomes that are currently on on the books about a block away from this going south at the Cedar Point location. It's a pipe farm currently, or basically the the townhomes in the front haven't been built yet. Those are a little bit different, but it is something similar, but it hasn't come out of the ground yet. We do have multifamily in this area. Right across the road on Ponderosa, we do have duplexes as well. So these types of attached homes are not wholly uncommon, but in this arrangement with as a fee simple, it is. It is an infill development. It's a rather unique development in the sense of it's a large infill property along a corridor that hasn't been built all these years. It is also a design that would improve safety and accessibility for both pedestrians and public transit. And then it also promotes that intra and interconnectivity within and between neighborhoods as you saw through that central road. However, well, not however yet, but from staff recommendation, for the special use requests, we support both the special use requests. So to allow single-family attached and restaurants and bars in the airport overlay, as you see in your staff report, the airport authority did state that they are approving of this. And if you re-watch their meeting, they actually stated that they will be expecting this type of development in the future. And they've need to understand that this isn't an uncommon request in terms of a development pattern, and it's one that they're okay with. Also, the second request of the allow the underlying CN uses in the Gaines School corridor overlay. I believe the applicant will talk a little bit about that later, but I'll let them speak on that. For waiver requests, there are six in total, staff supports for and opposes. So some of the conditions, there's the however. The first condition that we're requesting or recommending is that Transportation and Public Works essentially had two options that they laid out for the applicant in terms of how to deal with the stormwater. The applicant has given us written word that they accept that those either or. And during the plans review process, they'll work with Transportation, Public Works in and how to deal with that as both sides see best. The other thing, though, is for water and sewer lines, right now, the there's not enough engineering for water and sewer lines to be exact. So the that condition is really to make sure that when it comes to plans review, all parties can can work within the footprint that's laid out to move the water and sewer lines to best meet the the goals of the project. Sorry, I flipped one and two, but there you go. And then condition number three would be a ten-foot-wide multi-use trail along Gaines School Road in lieu of the five-foot sidewalk. We also received a letter from the applicant stating that this is something that they're okay with. This condition is about the future of Gaines School Road. And as time goes on, we're going to be looking at this corridor as a court of importance, especially with the future land use effort. We've been speaking a lot about this. The way that the commercial is currently laid out would be a essentially a brick a brick area with street trees along the very front of the commercial. This would allow for a multi-use path to be there, and it's something that the arborist can work through in plans review. So staff is recommending approval on the future land use and then approval with the following conditions for the zoning. And that concludes the staff report.
Thank you. Now, can we hear from the applicant?
Sorry, Scott.
Technical difficulty.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Scott Haynes. I work for WNA Engineering. I was located three fifty-five Anita Street here in Athens. I wanted to take time tonight to address some of the changes to the plan since our last presentation to you, but before I do that, excuse me, I wanted to talk just a little bit about the community interaction that we've had in the interim. After our our meeting on January second, the last planning commission meeting, we were contacted by some of the representatives from both Cedar Creek and Green Acres neighborhoods. These folks were kind enough to come meet us at our office and had nearly a two-hour meeting reviewing the plans. During that meeting, we tried to help clarify some information in our application, including facts like this project represents a reduction in the commercial square footage than what is allowed there today by right. We also agreed to increase the required five-foot sidewalk that was mentioned earlier to a ten-foot-wide multi-use path to help accommodate desired future pedestrian improvements along this corridor. We worked on and agreed to a list of restricted uses, which you have just received. And we also listened to concerns that the group had about the alignment of Woody Lane with the outbound lane of Ponderosa. We did explain that that alignment wasn't keeping with best practices of traffic engineering. And even so, after that meeting, we reached out to ACC Transportation and Public Works to confirm that this alignment did in fact match their recommendations, which are good. I would like to thank those members of the neighborhood, many of which are here tonight, for their engagement with us. It is unlikely that we were able to satisfy the entire group entirely, but I do think that the additions that resulted from that meeting made the plan better. So looking at the changes, first, I've already mentioned that we increased the sidewalk along Gaines School to ten-foot-wide multi-use path. We also showed the children's play area, what was a requirement in this district. We added a buffer between the townhomes and the commercial parking area. And we've worked on the architectural end treatments of those façades that face the public street. Here's examples of those that I pulled from the architecture that was submitted, and you can see those side ends. As you can see, we increased the fenestration by adding windows, and we also enhanced articulation by adding bump outs to break up those façades. As mentioned in staff's report, primarily against our waiver for number five, we're still short on the fenestration requirements. Although it's a little unclear about some of this, staff mentions the use of trim as counting in the calculation potentially. And if that's true, then we are above the requirement and we can reduce or eliminate the leave of the waiver. But if not, then we are a few percent short. I know two percent seems like, well, you can just make two percent. But we've already done a good deal to try to get to where we are, and trying to get that extra two percent would require some interior changes that might be difficult. An example of this is having to move a stove from a perimeter area to a center island in the kitchen to gain another window. That said, we're really more concerned about having to be the waiver number permissions the rep for his request. We do not believe that there's a significant gain from this, and then it's really going to be driving cost to do so. Units are oriented, the two in question are oriented towards green space, and given the improvements to the side facade treatments, ask for your consideration, letting us have that waiver. Now, all of that said, our ultimate goal is to leave here tonight with your support. So in considering this, if we can't get past these, then we hopefully want to have your approval on this, and so we're willing to try and work these issues out. But I do ask for your consideration and discussion. Again, are the changes that we, additional changes, as you saw, party on the handout, here's the list of self-restricted uses, most of which are around auto-centric type activities, vehicle repair, this gas-powered vehicle repair, gasoline sales, drive-throughs, and hostels and nursing homes are also listed. I also want to point out that we did clean up some of our waiver requests, addressing some of staff's comments from the prior report, and we were able to eliminate the restaurant parking change that we'd asked for, so that was no longer requested waiver. In closing, I do believe this project will benefit the east-south Athens. It offers new homeownership opportunities. We know we have housing needs that we need to meet in this community. It utilizes an otherwise unused piece of property this end, and it will enhance interconnectivity to the existing street network. Most importantly, we do believe this will be a great place for residents. Happy to answer any of your questions, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone to speak in favor of this?
Maybe.
Is there a neighborhood representative?
Yeah. I don't know if we're in favor or against.
Yeah.
Oh.
There's a neighborhood representative that signed up for the ability to speak for ten minutes.
Would they speak separate or would they speak whenever they?
Question.
That's a good question.
We might want to finish those that are speaking in favor.
Okay. So seeing none, is there anybody here to speak in opposition of the project?
Yeah, that's you.
And to make clear, it's okay whenever you want to speak, you could just, we'll get the justice, one way or the other.
And I asked for the ten minutes. Yes. Yeah. Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this plan development. My name is Ken Porkey. I'm a resident of Cedar Creek, one sixty, Post Valley Road, and I'm president of the Cedar Creek Civic Association. This plan development kind of surprised us. The east side has been watching this undeveloped plot of land for probably two decades, wondering what was going to go in there. So this PD surprised us in the extent to which the project sets aside the Gaines School Road overlay district conditions. And I want to point out a little bit of that. That's going to be the second part of my discussion. The first part, I want to talk about the issue of safety. But this can be seen in the increased density, the height of the residential units proposed, how tree cover is handled, how setbacks and lot sizes are reduced, and the request to rezone commercial from C zero to CN, that's office to neighborhood. In addition, the creation of another cut in the Gaines School Road so close to the Sunny View Road exit and across from the Cedar Creek subdivisions, Ponderosa Drive entrance, and across from the ambulance service, which is just next to our entrance, we think poses a safety issue that needs to be addressed. As was mentioned, some Cedar Creek residents and I met and discussed these issues with the planning department staff, with traffic and public utility staff, and with York Homes and WA engineering personnel. Some of our concerns were alleviated as a result of these discussions and others were not. We really appreciate the developers offered conditions that include the ten-foot multi-use path, placing limits on the kind of businesses that occupy the commercial building, and their insurances of the sizes and kinds of trees to be planted along Gaines School Road. We feel these conditions set a good example for future redevelopment and growth along Gaines School Road, but concerns remain. Of the direct concern to the Cedar Creek residents that I represent is the Woody Lane extension, as you can see. Our understanding is that the Woody Lane extension was placed specifically with safety in mind and to believe that drivers approaching this intersection will be more aware of the potential danger and adjust their actions by slowing down accordingly. We doubt this will happen, and this leads to our first request to the board, and that is if this project needs a traffic light at this Gaines School Road, Ponderosa, Woody Lane extension. It's needed to alleviate current and future problems with vehicle and pedestrian safety. Gaines School just, and and this is in my written comments, but I just wanted to point out Gaines School Road already exceeds a thousand vehicle trips a day in front of this intersection. But and at seven thirty, yeah, between seven thirty and nine in the morning and eleven and seven thirty in the evening. If you're trying to come out of Ponderosa and turn left, good luck at both the morning and the afternoon rush hour. Ponderosa sees a hundred trips an hour between four thirty and six PM each day and a thousand trips a day coming out of that exit. Now, you add to that, I estimated roughly four hundred new trips coming out of the Woody Lane exit, and you're seeing a significant intersection. Without a stoplight with slow Gaines School Road vehicles to posted limits, by the way, traffic is not doing thirty-five at this intersection. They leave the learning center, school zone, and step on the gas. They leave the middle school heading north and step on the gas, and they're doing at least forty-five, which which adds to more safety issues. So we think it will, a traffic light would help provide more safety for vehicles turning, entering Ponderosa and Woody Lane, and would allow pedestrians and cyclists to cross the street. This commercial center, they're talking about a cafe, they're thinking, you know, residents are going to walk over, you're going to have to hike a half mile up to the early learning center to cross safely and come back, or go all the way down to Cedar Creek, cross at the light and come back. It's not going to happen. Same thing for the bus stops. And I wanted to point out, you mentioned the May Court's report. The May Court's report recommends access managed interventions on Gaines School Road due to the high number of driveway cuts along the road posing safety entrance and issues. The Woody Lane exit would add one more cut. So it's it's just adding issues of safety. My second point, my my second point addresses My second point addresses how this, a broad issue on the Gaines School Road overlay district conditions. Essentially, we think the 25-year-old Gaines School Road overlay conditions need to be looked at. And we think the planning commission should recommend to the mayor and commission that they look at that and not just throw it out for the first significant development that comes along. And in my comments, you'll see what I mean by throw out the conditions. I mean, we already seen 20,000 square foot lot under the Gaines School Road. That's probably unreasonable in the year 2025. It maybe was reasonable in 2000. But really, do we move to 1,500 from 20,000? That's a big jump. And I understand why they're asking for that, because they want to sell these townhouses as fee simple, which means they want to sell a lot underneath the townhouses. But we also think it sets a bad example for the other, what would I say, 56, no, 26, C zero commercial properties along this section of Gaines School Road. It's not just this one undeveloped lot that we're worried about. It's the other 26 lots, and not counting the one at Cedar Ridge that's already, who knows what's going to happen there. But we're concerned that this sets kind of a bad example. And it's going to force a lot of development onto the streets. So the first thing I wanted to make, the last couple of things I want to point out is that the, why did we even put the Gaines School Road corridor overlay district in place in 2001? So I looked at the ordinance, and it says, "It was created to ensure that new development is visually compatible with existing residential neighborhoods." Okay, adjacent to the Gaines School Road corridor, and that the permitted uses are compatible with the adjacent neighborhoods. Okay, while the underlying zoning district designation general provides for the allowed uses, the district overlay requires that new construction remain the residential character within the corridor by limiting the mass of proposed structures, encouraging building groups providing for landscaped yards and open areas. So there's still a lot of things in the Gaines School Road overlay that we think are really good. This development doesn't quite pay any attention to those. And I've listed many of those kind of on the last part of my written, my written comments. For example, the minimum setback. Most of the properties, the commercial properties right now on Gaines School Road that are in the overlay are setback about 40 feet from the road. Next door to this is the Chick-fil-A office that's the newest building. It's at its, at its minimum, it's 33 feet from the road. This commercial building is going to be 22 and 5 inches from the road. You know, we can see the creep happening, 30, 40 feet, 33 feet. The next thing you know, they're going to be built up against the multi-use path. The building height and the original stuff, something in the report says 65 feet for the Gaines School Road maximum height. And I didn't see that in Stephen's presentation, but it was in the master plan report somewhere. And we didn't understand where that came from. We're worried with the tree cover, you know? This request is to remove all the trees, build, and then put trees back in again. There are some nice trees on this property, not a lot, granted, you know? It's probably two or three trees. But are they to be sacrificed, and what example does that set for the redevelopment? If you drive down Gaines School Road, you're going to see a lot of mature trees and landscaping in front of these commercial properties. They're not, you know, they're all up for grabs as far as we're concerned. So given that I've got the yellow light here, I'm going to, I want to just briefly talk about the rezoning. They're asking for rezoning from C zero to CN. The master report says, oh, there's not a lot of difference. I would say the proffered conditions point to a number of possibilities under CN that don't exist under C zero. We asked for six or seven of them to be excluded, but there are many more that would really change the nature of the road if they were allowed. Thank you for your time.
Sir, is there anybody else to speak in opposition to the project?
I'm Robert Gorman at 190 Mockingbird Circle, also in the Cedar Creek subdivision. I'm going to take like two minutes. First of all, there are a lot of Cedar Creek and Eastside folks here. Could you just raise your hands? Yeah, so there's a lot of concern. I want to bring up two things. One is that 1,500 square foot lot size. What's this, and I realize this division, this subdivision has them inside. What's to stop a future developer from saying, we want to put those along the front? Just a whole row of those things. And the second thing is, the highest building in Cedar Ridge proposal is 34 feet. Why does this have a a request for 65 feet from the, in the planning thing? I mean, we don't want to see a future where you've got 1,500-foot lots on Gaines School Road, 65-foot-high buildings. What's, where's the precedent setting? And where does it stop? So those are two big concerns.
Thank you.
My name is Ross Watson. I'm with Cedar Creek Rescue. Pass it around for me, please. I'm going to pass it to the audience here. I want to talk about my major concern, and that is safety. And it should be your major concern in today's world. Take a look at my fantastic drawings here, okay? I put this together last night. I wish I had a screen I could put it up, but you'll find if you get to know me, I'm not much on technology with computers, okay? It's the old-fashioned style. I'm very concerned about all this activity that's going on when you put these new entrances here. You pick up a color and follow that color, whether it be purple, blue, yellow, orange, whatever. And you can see that we're having a lot of people trying to get out of Cedar Creek, having to cross over two lanes to go south and easily can make a right lane out, okay? And if you're trying to get into Cedar Creek, you got to cross two lanes to get across. We have a bus stop in green that you can see in the, on the drawings. We're encouraging walk-around environment. This is what everybody wants in Athens and Clark County. We're setting up town centers, residential develop, let's put in bike paths, let's walk with. You can't cross this road. And I just want to leave you with the responsibility that someone has to seriously look at, how is a person going to go from one side to the other at 40 mile per hour plus traffic going back and forth? No stoplight, nothing to stop anything, and all these people trying to skip over two lanes to get to the lane they want to go to, and all the new traffic coming in. Just take some time to look at this. It may not be impressive, okay? But if you follow all these lines, you try to figure it out. And I didn't even include all the traffic in putting the lines in, because you only have one entrance in and a half, and the entrance out, going to Springview, I believe that is, and the one coming in Lexington and Woody. So it is going to be busy. I like the development, okay? I think it's come a long ways, but it's not the safest way to get to it. And you put a candy shop in, you put a bakery in, you put a yoga place in across the street. How are the people that you want to come across from 672 homes in Cedar Creek going to get across the street? It's not possible. Not safe. Please consider that. Please request that a stoplight be put in when you approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else to speak in opposition?
My name is Conrad Allgood. I live in Cedar Creek subdivision 130 Arbor View Drive. And I'm just here to speak as a citizen and resident. I don't hardly know anybody. I've only lived in the subdivision for two years. But 50 years ago, I was a student in landscape architecture. And I lived in Parthenon Apartments, which is 60 feet that way. And so I've seen this progress through timeframe, and it's, it's been amazing. It hasn't changed much. This is a big deal. This is a big deal coming in. And my wheelhouse is, there's no bad guys here. The, everybody works for somebody that's got to make a profit. And Scott and his team have done a great job on this. I can't imagine the coffee and stuff it'd take me to draw this many drawings and how much he's fought for green space in this place. But with that said, sometimes drawings have to be revised. So business is an equation, and they're to make profit, and they, that's their job. Y'all are the brakes on that profit. Y'all are the ones that protect the citizens from the profit, and that goes whether it's a hamburger or whatever. Y'all, y'all have to check. And sometimes, sometimes drawings have to be revised, because this is a big deal. Sometimes if you had a swimming pool, you'd have to revise the drawing three or four, six, eight, 20 times, I don't know. But to get it right, if it was in your backyard, well, this is in our front yard, okay? And if you look, go down the street and look at the green space, but on this part of Gaines School Road, sorry, but this doesn't reflect it. And I assume the overlay is to make an area better or keep it the same. I've never seen one that makes it worse. So they're coming from, I guess, I understand it, two lots per acre a long time ago to 16 lots per acre, when a bunch of smart people came together and said, that's what we need. And now we're trying to go for one and a half times that many, which I don't care. They put all they want to in the back. They can put basement units in or whatever, I don't care. But the roadside needs to look the same. It needs to blend. It's kind of like a mullet haircut, you know? So they need to, need to look like, like business or nature in the front. And so I hear, you know, 10-foot path. Well, I just heard it's a 20-foot setback from the curb. You put a 10-foot, 10-foot path, now a 20-foot setback, you got five feet on either side. I'm the guy that they call up and say, hey, Clay, what kind of tree can we put in? It won't hit the buses and won't hide the signs on the building. You got to have space. You got to have space for green, and you got to have space for continuity. And as far as the lot sizes and all that, I don't care. Looks like our median coming into our subdivision. We could put two houses on it, I guess, if this passes. The community could sell the median and have a couple houses there. But anyway, I just ask y'all to reconsider the, the street curb appeal and make sure it blends in with the rest of Gaines School Road. Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else to speak in opposition to the project?
Good evening, everyone. Erin Galvin McCoy. Live at 2165 South Millage Avenue. I lived on the Eastside for most of my life. I've been in Athens my entire life. I'm 29 years old. You may recall that I was one of the people who originally spoke out against this project in January. In addition to all of the concerns that have been brought up here today, the concerns that I originally had in January were not alleviated by the discussion that was had afterwards. I was told last time that the projects of this type do not drive gentrification or displacement in the neighborhood, but I fail to see how that's true, frankly. Because townhomes for sale at a lowest price point of around $300,000, which going by local prices on Zillow is fairly average for Athens as a whole. The only families that are going to be able to afford that are the ones that are upwardly mobile and at minimum, probably already middle class. And when we consider the disability accessible units, like many disabled people who can't work, can't even get, can't get married unless their income goes, because their income will go above $1,620 a month, and they'll lose access to government benefits. So unless someone has family who can buy that house for them, how is someone in that situation meant to afford a $400,000 townhome? So, and so I was also said, told last time that the reason that we need to build, and I'm not opposed to the idea necessarily, but that there is a demand for housing, and increasing supply will drive down this demand. But my question is, whose demand are we fulfilling here? This is the Eastside, and you know, yes, Cedar Creek is right there, the Sunnyside neighborhood is right there. But also, you know, a little bit up the road, you've got Barrington Place, a little bit down Cedar Shoals, Highland Park Drive, the Oaks, Athens Gardens, you know, all of these areas that are largely low income. And so my question is, and you know, all of the neighborhoods that are more middle class are already established, like long established, they've been here my entire life. So my question to the commission is, how is building this development that incentivizes largely wealthier residents to move to this area, which is surrounded by these higher concentrations of lower-income areas, which the likely result of which will be raising property taxes? And, you know, nine times out of 10, you ask a landlord, why has my rent gone up? They're going to blame property taxes. How would that not contribute to gentrification and displacement? I think that's, that's a genuine question. I would really like to know. And I would urge the commission to reconsider sacrificing an unbroken green space, which ecologists consider being unbroken, most important for environmental sustainability for development. Thank you.
As I get older, I'm losing my voice a little bit. So if I don't talk loud enough, just give me the finger. Just don't give me the wrong finger. Hello, everybody. I'm Hank Joyner. I reside at 410 Millstone Circle. I'm a three-time member of the planning commission that you sit on. And I was also in the original committee that created the current land use plan. I also own 306, 145, and 147 Spring Tree Road. 306 Spring Tree Road is an 825-square-foot cottage directly across the street from the proposed development. It will be greatly affected by this development. But more importantly, there is a small work, this is a small working-class neighborhood. That is the very, there are very few of these left in Athens, Clark County. As you review this development, please consider the bigger picture. Development anxiety must consider more than just economics of numbers of units referred to in density, as density by planners. We need to consider the following. Stormwater management, there is no, and I mean absolutely no, stormwater infrastructure in the adjoining neighborhood. That is, and it will be affected by this proposal. And I see no stream on the county maps to handle such runoff. Staff report states, developer will be responsible for off-site improvements to public and private stormwater conveyance. How will the developer handle conveyance of private properties that would be directly affected by this massive eight-acre development runoff? As this runoff will run downhill into the neighborhood, a new extended wooden drive will have an effect of sheeting water from the, from that roadway to the lower elevated Spring Tree Road and property owners. Again, a small working-class neighborhood without any infrastructure to handle such volume of stormwater. Substandard streets. Spring Tree is very substandard. We just got traffic calming devices to slow the through traffic from Lexington Road to Gaines School Road. There are no sidewalks, and there's no room for sidewalks. Many neighbors walk and fight this very narrow street. New traffic using substandard streets will only create more problems to the neighborhood. Room for future widening doesn't exist. There's no room to expand the street. County standards for width, sidewalks, and stormwater management, it can't be handled. Design. All buildings are pushed right to the edge of the property. And more importantly, buildings along Spring Tree Road will be rear-facing at 25-foot tall, plus any additional elevation from the street. I see this as an insult to our small, little neighborhood. County ACC's traditional neighborhood design standards of fronts facing close to the street with forces does not exist. The design of the buildings offers no unique design features. So in conclusion, the plan does not meet ACC growth concept, creates an isolated district, waivers to the Gaines School Road overlay, and the plan is not actually, actually compatible with the state, with the neighborhood. It does not align with in scale or size with the adjoining smaller neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Joyner. All right, hearing none, the applicant can have two minutes for rebuttal.
Thanks. Just make a few comments here. First off, I heard some concerns about height, and I just want to address that. I think there were some concerns that we're allowed to do 65 feet, or we're asking for concession, do 65 feet in height. That's, that's not, not the case. We're, we're under 35 feet. So the other thing around this is this is a binding plan. There was concern, same gentleman had about what keeps us from essentially changing the plan and doing more units. This is a binding plan. We can't change this plan without coming before subsequent bodies to do that in the same type of process. So there should be some assurance that what we're showing you here is, was what the intention is for the development. If that has to change, then it has to go through this process again. There's concern, I've heard of multiple folks over the, the traffic and this, again, Woody Lane and Ponderosa alignment. And in fact, it's really putting that traffic onto the street that's to the east of it, that does not already align to civitan, you see in your handout, really creates a dangerous interlocking left condition. That would be a, a dangerous thing. Because those driveways are not in alignment, those left turns have to come and meet each other and grow. That's not safe. So that's why intersections align across from each other directly. I know also there's been some serious concerns about runoff. And the fact of the matter is, you can't not flood neighboring properties. It's a trespass. We have to deal with this runoff onsite. We have to restrict its flow. We have to deal with offsite conditions to make sure that we do not flood other people's property. That's just the law. So there should not be concerns over that. It's what we have to abide by or we are in violation of, of the law. So I hope there's some, I hope that thanks, at least somebody feel a little bit better about that particular issue. Thanks.
All right. So we'll bring it to the side of the room. So does anybody want to start us off with a discussion?
Question for staff, but can you all tell us a little bit about what could happen on this property CO? Density wise, residence density wise?
That would be?
By right. What can happen on this property by right?
Right, that'd be sixteen beds to the?
Sixteen bedrooms per acre. Okay.
They'd all have to be on the second floor. It couldn't be on the first floor.
What's that?
Can't be on the first floor.
Okay. Because you have the ground level, but commercial, that's my fire. Okay.
A question about traffic. So I think this is a really nice depiction, by the way. In my world, this is called the spaghetti diagram. But what, what are our limitations with recommendations for traffic studies? Because I don't know that we have the jurisdiction to make those decisions. Or making decisions about the plan development.
So trip generation counts in the code will dictate when a traffic impact analysis has to be prepared. So one hundred peak hour trips or a thousand trips in a day will require a traffic impact analysis. And that would go through our transportation and public works engineering staff to edit, make sure that if this development is coming through and if it has a negative impact on the roadway, this developer would be required to, within reason, make improvements to the roadway to make it safe and to function properly. So to that extent, it is already in the code and it's not something that the planning commission would have to require or request? If that's helpful? Okay.
What recourse do we have? I mean, the, the neighborhood makes a really good point about the Gaines School overlay and those measures being in place since 2001 that haven't been revisited. Is that something that we can do? Can we send it back to look at the Gaines School overlay? And see if the overlay itself needs to be adjusted?
Might be two separate issues. I think, I think this body can initiate that kind of study, but wouldn't be in a position to say, we're going to hold this while we revisit it in entire ordinance. If it's something that resonates with the group and that is something that, that is the planning commission wants to initiate a review of, you do have that ability to initiate, make that request of staff to initiate that review.
And following up on the traffic thing, I had a question for staff just about, I don't know much about traffic lights and how they, who decides where to put them and how that whole process works. And I meant, I heard the, you know, neighbors mentioned a lot of requests for a traffic light. So who even does that? And how does that process look like?
Might defer to Kyle from?
Sure, thanks.
Can I maybe piggyback on that question a few? Because I had a similar, mainly with the Ponderosa road that comes out, because it has like two lanes. It, it does, how to, how to think that complicated when you have these two different lanes versus if it was just one in and out directly across from this development?
Okay.
Do you want to say plan that?
Yes, please.
Okay. First of all, I'm Kyle Dalton. I'm with Transportation and Public Works. I'm a land development engineer at Stairs. Let's start with?
Red lights?
Sure. All right. All right. Let's talk about the red light situation first. We, it goes back to the traffic study, looking at what the traffic study says. And the traffic study says that this would increase conflicts here to a certain extent or create a problem, like we're underutilized or the roads are underutilized or overutilized. That would trigger whether or not we need to look into a red light study. Just to be honest, given the size of the development, it's probably not going to trip something like that in this case. Also with the distances from, you know, this, this driveway to the next driveway or next intersection here, and same thing going the other direction, they've really got more than enough room as far as length of run up for visible, for people to be able to see to stop or slow down or whatever they need to do for that, for that to be safe without a red light. So the next question, as far as the alignment of this road to Ponderosa on the opposite side, this is the optimal configuration because people sitting here pulling out and people sitting here pulling out are directly aligned with one another. That's actually the safest way to have that set up. If they were aligned with the other driveway, they would actually be introducing more conflicts where they, they're going to be looking both up the street and having to look across diagonally there. And that would be less safe than what they've shown here. And back to Chris's comment, you made earlier, now this, this intersection does not align with civitan club across from it. Honestly, this will be a safer intersection than this one wants to smell.
Any, any other questions?
No, that's good.
Thanks.
Well, I'll throw it out there for the sake of discussion. I have a couple of points to make. I, I did have a concern about, well, let me, let me talk about the road first. As someone who has driven over this road to get to my account there for the last fifteen years, I am still constantly amazed how I can drive down this road and go right past their office and have to turn around. And we also, was it just a couple of months ago, another case came up where it was the building down the street from here that had the overlay. And it was the first time I had heard about the overlay. I think for all of us, we were like, there's an overlay. I appreciate the residents' comments about revisiting this. Because, and, and I'll say this from the context of driving down this road and buzzing past an office that I've been to a couple of times a year for the past fifteen years. There's something in the design that is not working. And I hate though, that we get to these situations with these projects where the projects come up and we're like, yeah, this road has a problem. I, I, I hate that. It's, it's like this backwards engineering. I mean, we all probably could have said that this road has issues. Everybody goes too fast on this road. This, there are traffic issues on this road. So, but is that enough to stop a development? I don't know. But I'm just putting it out there for the sake of discussion. I did have a question for the applicant. As far as stormwater goes, I do appreciate the residents' concerns and the fact that it's an older neighborhood and there is no stormwater management happening in the surrounding neighborhood. Could you explain a little bit more about the design of the property and how stormwater is managed on the property and how that works?
I'm going to actually call Buck up here to talk about this a little bit more. Talk really specifically about this particular question. So Buck Becken with DBNA Engineering. So to briefly go over the stormwater management plan, we've reviewed this with staff, public works staff. If you see the center of green space, there's a hatched gray area that represents a underground stormwater management facility.
Yes, green block.
So if you can see this space here, underneath our green space is an underground detention center or system that is intended to manage our stormwater pre-posed development. There's also an underground detention chamber proposed here, one here, and then two here. In studying the discharge from the site, the runoff that, that is discharged, we discovered that the culverts here at this intersection are undersized. They, they do not, they do not have the ability to manage the runoff of the site today without any development. And so we addressed that with public works by offering one of two options. Either we improve all of the downstream system to manage the current condition, not proposed. And then we design our stormwater system to manage that. Or we design our onsite stormwater management facility to ensure that it reduces or does not discharge any more runoff than the downstream pipe network can manage itself.
I'm sorry, you kind of said that as if there was an either or situation.
It is an either or. Yeah, let me describe it more. Yeah. So we have a downstream, we have a downstream culvert here and a series of culverts along Sunny View. Thank you. That, those culverts are currently undersized. They cannot manage the stormwater discharge that leaves this site in this area today before we develop it. So we either, either or situation here, we either improve those downstream storm systems to be able to convey the current required capacity.
The systems that are downstream.
Downstream. That's right. That's right. So we make improvements to the culverts along the street to ensure that they can carry the capacity of the storm today without development. Or we design our onsite stormwater management facility to manage all of the stormwater so that it does not overwhelm the existing condition.
So the goal here is to keep any of the stormwater on the site. It will not leave the site.
That's correct. Do no harm.
Okay.
May I respond to that?
No, we don't have, no. I'm really torn about this one in some ways, just listening to the neighbors. But there are a lot of really good site planning or urban design principles that I see in here. And I really, I like the, I like the development generally. I thought, I was a little surprised actually because my only, my, one of, an issue I have with the development is I want the houses that are facing the Spring Tree Road to be, to look a little bit more like the houses in that area. Even though it's not, there's not a lot of them. There, there are some, but I think that was the thing I thought people were going to be talking about. And certainly the safety of the road, which we all know is terrible. And there, there is a part of me, I get really frustrated about the traffic light issue because I think that we sort of tie our staff's hands behind their backs. They have to have sort of data and justification for putting in a light. And I respect that. But I also know that my common sense tells me the same thing you were saying, Kristen. There's something really wrong with that road and people are going way too fast. And so part of me saw this as an opportunity, like, let's get a light in there. Let's have, you know, a light gives away for people to cross the road. And a light, you know, that's a kind of a long stretch of Gaines School. Actually, I think that's one of the reasons why people are driving so fast. And I think that the visual element of the front of this site will change things in a way there that I think are actually good for that. This is a corridor. It is a locally owned road, right?
Yes.
Gaines School.
Yes.
And so I'm torn because, and, and there's a lot of arguments that I was hearing that I just simply don't agree with. I don't know. A developer can't build, even if they're just trying to break even, they can't build what we would call like affordable housing. That it's, I don't know what that would look like if, I mean, I'm using sort of capital A affordable, like affordable, the people earning sixty percent or less of the area median income. That is very difficult to build that using good materials, like where the houses will stay standing and the development's nice. So I, there's a lot to like about this and and I was sort of seeing it as an opportunity to make things, like to improve that for. I wanted to sort of address a couple of things that I heard. I really think it's important for people to understand that a planned development does not set a legal precedent. A person couldn't come here two years from now and say, you guys let those people do that. So we have a right to do that. If that is one of the reasons we have these binding site plans with planned developments and they don't, they could set a conventional precedent. In other words, a person come here and say, it's not fair. But they, you know, I want to do this here now because you all let that happen. And they can sort of make a plea their case in that way, but there's no legal legs to that. The other thing I wanted to say was, and maybe this is a question gets to the, why is there no stormwater and like facility in any way on that road back there? Is it just because it's sort of old and hasn't had resources directed its way yet?
Correct. So I can, I can start on this. And if you want a deeper answer, perhaps Kyle could fill in. But it's definitely has everything to do with the vintage of development surrounding it. That is down slope to the northwest. That entire area was developed at a time where stormwater design wasn't even a forethought, let alone an afterthought. It was, it, it was something a lot of times property owners had to kind of figure out after the house was built. If there was a crown placed in, in the development at all, it was where the home site was. And so everything kind of drained either to the neighbors or to the road. To the road be the conveyance itself. There isn't even that much of a ditch section along Sunny View or Spring Tree. So it does, it just predates that type of.
So it's relying on?
Mostly the roadway.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is it conveying it to anywhere in particular? Or is it sort of relying?
I mean, there is a creek to the northwest where it is meandering too. It's, it's not channelized. It's not directed. And as the applicant noted, the infrastructure that has been put in since, the sizing of it is not what we would do today.
Helpful. Yeah, I know I'm kind of all over the place. Other thought that I had. I'll, I'll have to come back to it because it's not, this is, this is kind of a tough one. I, I guess one thing I wanted to ask was, how did, you know, the Atlas Development on Lexington? Is that what it's called? Yes. How did that traffic light happen? Was it that they were generating enough traffic that it made it happen? And did the developer assume some of those costs?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I'll leave it at that for now. Let other people talk.
I understand your point about legal precedent, but I think it does set a precedent. I mean, it's still an argument people come back and try to make and it overcomplicates things. I personally would rather see the Gaines School overlay revisited before we just started scrapping parts of it. Especially when we're talking about reducing lot sizes from 20,000 square feet down to 1,500. Especially when we're talking about reducing lot sizes from 20,000 square feet down to 1,500. I mean, that's a big jump.
The end this is a vote or something. So. I'm not trying to rush anyone, just putting it out there. I do, I do want to say too, I appreciate the neighbors coming out because this is one of those cases where you read the literature, you go out, you visit the site. For years, I didn't even realize that this was a vacant lot, driving past it all the time. And I appreciate everybody who came out to speak this. It does, it does offer a great perspective.
Yeah, I think, I think I feel similar to both you two on development itself. I like a lot about it. But I've also driven, I used to live on the east side for many years. I was in school and after I was, when I was UGA, graduated. It's gotten worse. That road is kind of a nightmare to drive. I can only imagine I would be to try to get across the street. From a pedestrian standpoint. So yeah, that's. Now, again, how we. Do anything with this body to incorporate that or if we're to. To encourage a, a traffic study or, or yeah, I don't know. What are, what are responsibility or, or what we can do about that. But, but yeah, and that, and that camp as well.
Can I ask a question of the applicant?
Yes, yes. Oh, can the applicant come back?
So you've mentioned a couple of times in the proposal that this is designed towards seniors and to fill a senior housing?
Nope. Okay. Cause I had seen that before. So yeah, I was just curious how that element.
We're not, we're not asking for age restriction.
Okay.
I'd say like my general thoughts on it is I'm kind of overall, I feel good about this. I'm pretty much in favor of it. I. You know, I like the idea that these are. You know, somewhat affordable type individually owned houses, you know, we don't have a lot of that, like this. This is what we need to increase in Athens are. You know, these type of opportunities that might be looked at as like a starter home or loan, you know, and. Yeah. And I think that the smaller lot sizes is just what has to kind of come along with that. So I'm okay with. That part of it because it is unique and that these are going to be owned and not just rentals and one big lot. So I think that kind of offsets for me any hesitation about shrinking the lot size. Cause I do see that kind of fit in having them be like owned by the occupants. So I think that's a, that's a good thing. We don't have a ton of. Yeah, housing in that category. Feel good about it. Feel better about hearing the traffic stuff and about the weight and. Seems to be the best interpretation. And I feel better hearing the stuff about the stormwater from the plans to contain it. So. I think a lot of my initial hesitations have been satisfied.
So. Every one in the room seems to like the project in general, even those opposed to it are friendly about it. The applicant has apparently done a good job working with the neighborhood, which is smart and. And it feeds them information. One of my thoughts about this is this property is gonna wind up being a property. That sits there forever because it's never going to be perfect. And there's a. One and a half miles in another direction. There's a lot that sits there. And people try to bring something to it. And it doesn't get through. And the lot just sits there. Um, is there anything wrong with a lot sitting there? I don't always know. It is a part of that street. I frequent, frequently drive through there. It is in that place where it is. It's an odd no man's land. It's, it, like you said, it just. Or you know, in your past, that you just zipped right through it and you're at McDonald's and you didn't mean to be that far. I think this will bring identity to that area and will somewhat. Be its own resource of making people pay attention as they're driving there. It's not perfect. I haven't seen a development that is perfect in every single way. I've done a development and it wasn't perfect. And, but it met the needs. Affordability, not every project can offer what's considered by the math affordable housing. The number one thing that will provide better or more affordable housing. Is housing. We don't have anything to sell out there. It's, it's. The reason there's more houses for sale on the market now is because most of them are overpriced and they sit there and the consumers are smarter now. And they're not in any kind of rush to spend too much money. So don't be fooled by the reports you hear about more houses are on the market. There are not as many coming on the market as there should be to normalize and bring housing down where it can be affordable to more people. So. I think it's a good design. I think it's a good layout. I'm not loving that it is as close to the street as it is. The, I get that. But there's just a point where. You know, it's, it's never going to be perfect. It just, and there's, there's, it's rare to, to please 100% the, the surrounding neighborhoods. And that's a great neighborhood around. I mean, both sides of this project. I've been through there. I know people. On the backside of it. I know people on the front side of it. Great people. They've shown up. And strong force and they know what they're talking about. I'm very impressed. With the neighbors and their concerns. Which made it, I forgot which one of y'all said, I, I come into these meetings 75% convinced. In one way. Because between y'all and the people that speak. They're going to bring up things that I haven't necessarily seen, what you see and read on paper. And I think it was Kristen in the center, you see it on paper. But then you hear the real life folks that, that are around it. So it is puzzling. It's not as easy. And it's ma- making this one a very tough one. I've sat quiet the whole time, uh, listening. And. But overall, it's a, I think it's a, it's a, it's a really good looking project and. It's, it's bringing housing into that area is bringing something over. I'm, I'm leaning toward being in favor of it. But it is not perfect. I could understand some no votes as well. It's just. What is perfect? Do we ever get them like that? Sometimes we get them perfect enough. And is this one perfect enough or close enough to that or not? It's, it's tough.
Yes. It reminded me of one more thing I, I wanted to say too, and that was kind of like, I. Kind of from an environmental perspective of. Having a nice green space and still existing there. And. I kind of cut my teeth in local government by being real focused on environmental issues and. Kind of one of my driving philosophies is that, you know, I hate to lose green spaces in town. I'm usually in favor of like infill as a general concept because it prevents sprawling outside the city and disturbing. You know, what are truly natural areas like forests and undisturbed rivers and creeks and stuff. So. I see these kind of already, you know, cleared in a nice in town unused location is actually being a, you know, very good. Overall environmental solution for development, keeping it contained and. Where the natural landscape is already very disturbed and keeping the city from spreading out. So in that aspect, I, you know, I kind of like the idea of this being such a big parcel that isn't. Has a lot of potential to, you know, maybe see some good development. And prevent that from going elsewhere because. Athens is growing regardless and it can either grow out, but I would rather see it kind of fill in and then grow out at best. That's my kind of, my like concept.
I'm, I'm you, but I have one question for staff. Before, before at least my head, um, the idea of the overlay, the traffic issues, what's going on with game school in general. Like I'm recognizing there, there's, there's, there's the issue at hand tonight, which is development, but then the larger issues that plague this. Procedurally as a body, what can we do to bring to the attention of the mayor commission? Some of these larger issues that we would like some attention directed to.
If you would like, what, what we might want to do, we could take that up under other business. Really about. The ability that this body has to initiate action. And, and that'll give me a chance to kind of gather the words to be able to address that process. But I think, I think that would be my answer right now is happy to provide that sort of insight. There is a way to do that. And the game school road core overlay was the first overlay that was adopted on the code that we have today. And it was an overlay that was bridging two separate sets of code. It was a very conservative overlay at the time. That was meant to take the old design code and let it continue to have a heartbeat on this roadway only. And, and so that it was worth it. Pretty clearly to do that. So if there is a desire to revisit. What's happened 25 years since that original impetus for putting it in place? I think that's totally appropriate. And then we could talk about scope and timing and that kind of thing. This area has been focused on as part of the future land use map development. So we feel like we've been trying to work through policy wise to set the stage for that kind of discussion. So it's, it's in, it's in the chute, but timing of that would be something that we could talk about.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a quick question to that same statement.
Okay.
Why, why, do you know why they wanted to? Why they wanted to do that? Why was it important at that time to bridge the? The zoning code change to get school?
The, at the time of the adoption of the new code, which was a very. It was, it was a highly charged process. Rezoning an entire jurisdiction is never easy. And we took on an entire county. And so some of the, the machinations of getting to the point of a vote. Involved some placeholders in the map. And so this overlay was a, a tool that we'd never had before in the code. And we really wanted, we felt it was necessary to have overlays as a way to. Recognize unique context and unique things that a one size fits all code can't handle properly. So the commissioner at the time, Commissioner McCarter. He found that that tool that was going into the new code was. Preferable from the old code. But he was not necessarily in favor of some of the mixed use provisions and the new design standards. That he felt were untested and unproven. And so the overlay was put here at his request. As a way to. Hold on to, to gain school road. Let's let this new code 25 years ago, new. Perform. And see what happens. In the meantime, he wasn't really willing to buy in. To some of the concepts that were being talked about with the adoption of the code five years ago.
Thanks. That's awesome. Piggyback on that question. If we, if we try to initiate the process to get that overlay look at again, are we? Doing duplicitous work to the future land use maps? I mean, is that going to be sorted out anyway?
I wouldn't call it duplicitous, but I think timing is the key. And we can talk about that later, but I, I think there's a sequence of events that makes sense. And finishing the future land use map overall, I think would be preferable. And then this could be one of those pieces that we look at once we have an adopted future land use map. To look at implementation of some of the things that have been talked about.
Yeah. So I guess for, for anybody who might be paying attention, we're going through the process of the future land use map and updating that. So this is a really interesting timing to bring up discussions like this before we set the new one in stone, right? We can think about the priorities. So Jen, did you have another comment?
I was just going to say that it is. There are elements of this design that are beautiful and I can absolutely support. But it's seven acres undeveloped. In an area that has got a lot of infrastructure challenges and putting that much density. When there are those infrastructure challenges still in place in the area, the area is a little in flux. I don't know if I can get behind something that. It's going to put so much density on a property. That everything around it's just not ready to handle yet. So that's my concern.
If anybody wants to make the motion.
And I, Scott has got something to say to my point. Is that appropriate to allow that?
Would you, would you like a clarification? Scott may have a clarification of that point.
I, I understand your concern. I would offer that. A certain amount of density is required. To then. Allow for those infrastructure improvements.
So are you just to clarify? The infrastructure improvements that are needed to make this project viable in the area. Need that kind of density to get to the penthouse.
This project needs to extend some sewer. And it needs to do some stormwater upgrades. A lower density project can't handle that additional infrastructure challenge and cost.
And you would still have the same. Impact on the infrastructure if you decrease the density.
Well, I think there's infrastructure inadequacies today.
Yeah, regardless.
Regardless of what goes there, by law, water cannot leave the site. At a, at a higher rate than it did before development. So whether it's this development or a single house, like the stormwater leaving the site still can't flood downstream properties. The difference being single house can't afford. The additional infrastructure costs to potentially improve the conditions downstream that could have larger benefits. For that area. So I think that it's necessary and, and one of the reasons why the site has not been developed to this point. It's because it does require a certain capacity of density to make it viable.
Thanks.
Got another, this is comment. I was actually having this conversation this week. I seem to have had it the week before and the week before that with people asking. How this process works as it goes through and, and I explained starts with staff. Comes to planning commission, then the mayor and commission final, but. The way I put it was staff deals in black and white, basically. It's just, here's, here's what it says. Here's how it is. Here's our recommendation. I described it as planning commission. Then goes and deals with gray, black and gray, white. We deal with a little more gray. But we're dealing with us and we're dealing with this and we're hearing from the public, but we're really, we're, we're. Digging very deep into this. So we're turning black and white into some grayish. And then the mayor and commission gets all gray in it because they are the elected officials. Who do report directly, I guess you would say, to their constituents as elected officials. So as we have seen, we may vote unanimously on something. And the mayor and commission may vote complete opposite unanimously. Because they have that month or so to hear from their constituents that did not like how we voted. And that is like the most wonderful process in the world is why I don't take it personally. Uh, when I, when we vote this way and, and I mean, I will admit at first I was like, wait, what do you mean? You don't listen to us. Then I'm like, well, they're listening, not to us. They're listening to, to the voters. But they're hearing what we're saying. So. That's maybe I, what I can say, that's how I sleep at night, uh, when I'm voting, when possibly. I know somebody's going to get upset with this vote, no matter which way it goes. Uh, we've got. Great group of people who are trying to put a project together. We've got great neighbors who have good points too. But again, just to end that, we're dealing with grays, gray tones of black and white. And then there's still a group that's going to deal with all the gray, all the emotion, all of the. Feelings of how this goes and how it impacts their neighborhood. And, and that's, it matters to us, but. It's, we're, we're still dealing with a little bit different view on that.
Yeah. I'm ready to make a motion. I'd like to make motions.
Absolutely. And I, and the reason that. Reason I'm going to make this motion is that I do think this is inappropriate land use for the site. And I think. That is really kind of piggybacks on what you just said, Alex, which is that. We are kind of free from the. We don't have to worry about our constituents voting us in. We can just decide what we think is best for the site. And then at the more political level. And then at the more political level, these comments and questions will take place again. And I do, I feel the same way that you did, that I came to this thinking kind of sixty five percent and then I've wavered a little bit because of the good points that the communities made, but I still would like to make a motion in favor of the, we just have one vote on this one. So I guess I'll just start with making a motion to approve the land use change. And the staff conditions only apply to the rezon, right? So it's just that.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the future land use change. Do I have a second?
Second.
We'll do a roll call vote.
Motion to approve future land use change. Lee?
Yes.
Baresford?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Pass? Sams?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Do you want to make a?
Sure. I wanted to ask staff real quick, though. Is there, we're talking about some things we want to make recommendations to the commission about like traffic light. You know, we don't, I don't think it's in our jurisdiction to require a traffic light, but to me, this has to have a traffic light. But I know we can't require it. So is there a way for me to include? I I just want to, I don't know if that has to happen within our motion or recommendation or outside of it, but I think the stormwater and the springs tree needs to be looked at. I think the traffic light needs to be looked at. I think the people who live around there need to be included in that process and it can't just be based on traffic data. And I think the overlay is going to be reexamined as part of the future land use process anyway, but so I don't know if it just needs to be captured in a minute or if it needs to be part of my motion.
It doesn't need to be part of your motion. One thing y'all should know is staff prepares a summary document for the commissioners that that goes up to them, that shows the vote and has a wait, literally summary statement about the deliberation on the item, on on the motion. So what you're asking for is to direct staff to make sure that those concerns are are enumerated. Should the motion pass, we will do so and.
And I guess maybe that I'd want to hear the group to weigh in on those, just to make sure I just make to see if we all agree generally that those things need to be considered. I guess it doesn't have to be unanimous agreement, but because it would, the notes would reflect that anyway, that that was a concern. So I I think with this one, we're just dealing with the three staff conditions, right? Is there any other? Oh, so how do I incorporate that? So I just add that as a fourth condition?
What was the fourth? Yes, yes, that were presented this evening. You could refer to those.
Okay, so I just would like to make a motion for approval with staff conditions and then add the offered condition for restricting uses.
Do I have a second? Put your roll call vote.
Motion to approve with the conditions. Lee?
No.
Nope. Baresford?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Pass?
Yes.
Sams?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
Which passes? It's one.
All right, on to business. Four seventy five North Church Street. S U P dash twenty five dash O two dash seventy five three.
Okay, so this is Core seventy five North Church Street. And this is a special use request for a commercial short term rental. Just for clarification, my name is Stephen Jaques. So the request is to have a special use in an RM one district. This special use would be a commercial short term rental. Currently, it is a professional office and the history behind this location is is originally was a single family residence. However, in two thousand and three, it came through the plans review process to be converted to a professional office and received that certificate of occupancy stating it's professional office. Over the years, it was that and over the past few years recently, that individual sold the property to the applicant. But that was never converted back to a single family residence. So it still is currently from a an ACC government perspective, a professional office. But the applicant would like to do is to have that commercial short term rental and this is part of that process in order not just to get well, this is what is in part to get that certificate of occupancy moved back to a residence, not a professional office. However, the short term rental wasn't in operation prior to this application. It was in operation during that legal nonconforming period that we hear a lot about. However, the residence itself is eight hundred and thirty two square feet. And the applicant is requesting a maximum of four occupants. One of the things that did come up through this is some changes to the site and this being in a historic district that does need to be addressed at some point. And we did find that the special use criteria was met. So this is the property. So we have the school to the north here, the applicant's primary residence directly to the north. Throughout the area surrounding, we have multifamily. We have an apartment complex just to the south. And we have essentially a fairly large residence that has multifamily within it. This area does have a lot of different uses going on with it. As noted in the staff report, this is also within the Prince Avenue study that was done a few years ago. However, staff did find that it was far enough away from Prince itself where the study didn't really impact this location at all. So this is the future land use traditional neighborhood, which does allow for RM one zoning. That is why as we can see with the next slide, everything in the immediate vicinity is RM one. So the only change that would be here is adding that use, that special use onto it. All right, so this is the site plan that was originally submitted back in two thousand and three for the professional office. As we'll see from the North Church Street point of view, nothing has actually changed with this. What we have now, though, is essentially the same thing. However, at the very rear of the property, the ADA or the accessibility ramp has been removed, now has a step down and a nice patio area with gravel. That change in a historic district is something that at minimum needs a certificate of appropriance with staff determining whether it is something that can be at a staff review or something that needs to go to the historic preservation commission. So this is the view of the house from the front. As you saw in that site plan, it is exactly as it shows from two thousand and three. This is that back area, though. So this is the patio and gravel gravel that was added and that step down. I guess stoop instead of the ADA ramp that was there originally. So it is compatible with the twenty twenty three comprehensive plan. It is compatible with future land use, the zoning map and ordinances. It does meet that special use criteria. However, it does need to receive certificate of appropriateness for those site changes that did occur. And then so that is why we are recommending approval with condition, with that condition being that certificate of appropriat- appropriat- appropriateness. As noted in the staff report, before that short term rental can essentially recommence its operations. So a quick and easy one, but that's a staff report.
Thank you, Stephen. Now can we hear from the applicant?
Hello, Liz DiMarco, three twenty seven Hill Street. So I am to get gaining this special use permit. It seems like it's just jumping through a hoop and talking to staff. It seems like it's a relatively straightforward process, so I won't go through any of that. But I did want to give you a feel. So we purchased the house right in front of this, our church, church street twenty five years ago and that this little cottage this was basically sold off by the former owner. So it used to really be just an accessory structure to my house. So it's very small and John Leflam of Valerio Properties was back there. And so for almost those twenty five years, we were trying to get, you know, purchase it from John. And he finally, you know, he finally sold it. So, you know, rather than having it be an annual rental, because we we love to use it for our friends and family that come to visit. So this was sort of a solution because I didn't want it to just sit there vacant. But as you know, if you if you know me, you know that I am an incredibly strong advocate for in town neighborhoods and my focus is definitely on permanent residents. So I think it would follow that I'm going to keep a watchful eye on this short term rental and I'm actually able to have a short term rental because of our RM zoning versus RS zoning. So if Athens wants to offer short term rentals, my my spot is pretty good and I will make sure that it is not impacting my neighbors. In fact, this is very, I mean, I know that there was the multifamily that would that were shown by staff, but really, you know, Hill Street and Megs were very, it's been tremendous turnover back to family, single family. And so my neighbors want their friends and families to stay there. It's very convenient. So it's a plus and they have, as you know, I've been operating for a couple of years because I didn't realize, I just assumed that it went back to residential. So so I will ask if we can remove that condition about the COA. When, because when we bought it from John, the the ramp and the deck were starting to be an eyesore. They were actually causing water damage to the house. So, you know, the patio that went instead of that, because the the ramp went down and you could see it to the side from Church Street. We removed all that. You can barely see the patio or you can't see the patio. The gravel we use to connect to our home, because that makes sense because it was once part of our home. So and that can barely be seen. There never was that sidewalk that goes from Church Street to the front entrance, but there there is that other one goes going from the driveway to the front porch. So anyway, if you could, because I just feel like I get a COA every other week because I'm doing another project right next to me. And, you know, the addition of that stoop and patio and gravel path, I feel is less impactful. It doesn't really need a COA and I I have to go through plans reviews, so I think that that will be enough and we'll capture whatever needs to be captured. So I will request that. So I think that will do it. Thank you.
Yeah. Is there anyone here to speak in support of the proposal? Or anyone to speak in favor of it? All right, carry none. Don't forget to the side. Anybody have any questions? Alex, yes?
So a question for staff, the speaking of COA. That that is, why is that a condition brought forth by staff?
I'm happy to explain. The condition wording is really about the timing of the COA approval, not whether it's required. It is required. Whether it's a condition there or not, certificate of appropriateness approval is going to have to be completed for the condition at the rear of the property. So the timing is the condition, which is to say that COA approval would be needed prior to the short term rental operation commencing. Making sure that we're real clear that that's all part of this process and it needs to be finished before that short that commercial short term rental can begin to operate legally. So it's about timing. It's not about whether or not a COA is required. The COA is required regardless.
But why?
Because why would that even be the case?
Why would it be the case for this? I mean, I get the COA and I'm all for getting it. I I think it should because something has been removed and has to go through the process of why it was removed and what is there. So, you know, former preservation commission person, I I get the COA, but I guess I'm wondering, why does it? Why do we care over here for this property to function as a short term rental? Whenever, I mean, the COA is going to pick up itself, but why does that, what does that have to do with us? I still don't get why this can't be approved without that condition and go forth as this and then the preservation commission is going to catch it and do their magic, shut it down until then or whatever they're gonna do.
It it really is for clarity. Could this be removed? And this move forward? Absolutely. It wouldn't change this procedure. We would still, and 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 I just want, I think, I think the comments we've heard tonight sort of suggest that that's maybe not as understood that it's a must do. It's it's not, it's not something that this body can remove. So that's why we had it in there was to make sure that that's explicit, that the COA is required and the timing of the COA would be before the operation. You know, the instruments of the the occupational tax certificate, all the other things that go along with the business. That COA process needs to be completed before we we finalize the fact that this commercial short term rental will operate with all benefit of coming into place. So if this body felt like, okay, this condition is not necessary to be worded as part of a motion, you could certainly recommend that. But it doesn't change the fact that it has to be done.
And and it will, it will be like, if we don't put it in as the motion, Athens Clark County somehow is still going to catch that.
I mean, it's correct, correct.
Does that make you you follow what I'm?
I follow what you're saying.
Because I do often worry about the same thing. We don't put it in there, then it just goes into the wind and and no one paid attention.
Where where we were coming from by recommending it was the timing. So that it was, it was really understood that this is all part of the zoning process and the administration of code to get this in place before the operation can begin. That's, that's really what this was about.
Okay, so why do I? I'm so sorry if I'm like.
Well, can I just say, I feel like we had a similar condition with the short term rental that was up north town. The rental property where it wasn't, it wasn't a COA, but it was, there were some code issues that needed to be aligned before it could be used as a short term rental, if I'm remembering correctly.
We had some clarity that we wanted to bring to that one as well because we had other structures on site that weren't included in the ask in the application.
Yeah, certainly necessarily the same issue, but similar in that.
Same idea.
We're we're giving our approval, but we want to make sure that everybody else is aligned with that approval. And this this offered that buffer for that.
Okay, but my only concern would be the operation of this. We vote, I'm I'm saying if, okay, if we were to vote in favor. I I'm having a hard time understanding. I I'm having a hard time understanding why it matters to us that that property be used as a functioning short-term rental operation until the COA. Cause we don't have any control over when that uh COA is gonna be. And let's just say, if it took six months for that, this property sits without making any money. Could, you know, and so if we don't put the condition in there, then to our knowledge, she, I I'm sorry, I keep calling the applicant a she, it is you. And I know her as, but the applicant, I'm trying to be official, but it's hard, you know, it was friends. But but with the um, the applicant isn't held back for for removing something that absolutely was not historic to that house. Um, I mean, hundred years ago, they didn't have those functions. So so that's my concern, is if we put it in there and shuts it down until that, and it could be in two months or less. But it could also be in six months, who knows? And I would hate to do that to this if we're all in favor of it. And then now the applicant can't can't go forward until it goes through that process, which will be, if it hasn't already started, gonna be months. So why not let it function? And historic um preservation commission does their thing, rules for or against it, then they have to deal with it at that point. Then that's my, that's where I'm trying to get toward. That's why I'm not necessarily in favor of that condition. Okay, because it may be restricts, so maybe I don't need to talk to you anymore, I'm talking to y'all. I don't love the, I don't love the condition, because it's out of our range and it shuts it down until.
Yeah, and I I actually, I sort of respect what staff is trying to do when adding conditions like that, just to kind of clean things up. Like anytime somebody's coming in front of our body, it's a way to clean some things up related to a property. But that all being said, I'm inclined to remove the condition as well, because I I think it will be handled eventually. And I don't really want to hang this on something that could be delayed for some reason. I'm not really worried about the delay. I think this property can still operate as a short-term rental under this sort of grandfathering part of our our new regulation. Is that right? Like, I don't know how the R, it was just RS.
This approval would be needed to be able to operate.
Would or would?
Would.
Would, because this doesn't. RS.
Correct.
Got it. Okay, so, yeah, I I I understand why the condition was put there, but I would prefer not to have.
Has a different question for staff unrelated to the uh condition, if that's all right? And it was, I wasn't part of the, you know, discussion here when we did the STR stuff. And so I was just kind of curious if this had always remained one property, and this was just an accessory unit. Would they have to have this special use, or would the new ordinance cover that as like an owner onsite? Except, you know, like, would they just be able to do it if this was all one property, I guess is what I'm asking.
It's an interesting question, sort of outside of the reality of what we got.
I go, I know, and I guess I'm just.
Academic question.
Yeah, I'm just curious how the ordinance works, because, you know, like if, say if their neighbor had never subdivided the property and had a house just like this behind it, would they even have to go through this process?
I think that's RM.
The entire area is owned RM.
Okay.
Commercial short-term rental. You know, now, could you get a home occupa- if they wanted to operate commercially, they would have to get the special use. If if, and I think the applicant sort of hinted at the fact that they're using this as for guest orders and may expand that virtue of the short-term rental approval. If they were to apply as a home occupation and designate this structure as the structure to use the one short-term rental.
Like if this was like a basement.
They would not need the special use, because they would be, the owner is onsite, the residence onsite.
So is that from like a basement apartment, like if this, like if it was a basement apartment instead of a freestanding house, does the new ordinance? I guess what I'm asking, does the new ordinance?
If it's in the basement, in a separate structure, you get to pick one, doesn't matter.
Okay.
If it's onsite.
If it's onsite, so they would get to have one regardless, according to the new ordinance, whether it was a part of the house or a separate house.
That's right.
Okay. Yeah, so this is unique, because it is two separate properties that were divided way back when, maybe.
Yes.
Okay.
It's also not legal nonconformity, like this is establishing a new use, but it's not grandfathered in.
Yeah.
From office.
So for like, yeah, for like the Sunset Clause, is that what you mean? Like it wouldn't be grandfathered in under that?
It can't operate until it gets permitted as a new use.
Gotcha, okay.
Entertaining both. Okay, approve with removal of the condition.
Just approve with no condition.
Approve with no condition. I second that. All right, um, what's your roll call?
Motion to approve without the condition.
Yes.
Harris, Kurt?
Yes.
Goffin?
Yes.
Pass?
Yes.
Sam's?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yeah.
Lord?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now we have other things?
Yes.
Is this where we can talk about the in-school? Idea?
We we can do it under the commission chairs report if you would like.
Yeah, I'll comment here, to chairs reporter. Here's my thing, because I remember years ago, we had a a a project come up on Epps Bridge Road. And started off a whole discussion of like Epps Bridge Road and where it comes to Timothy and the craziness of the traffic there. We were like, we need to study, we need to study. And like, I don't know whatever came out of that. And I feel like we were pretty forceful at the time, that we wanted something to help us guide the development along that section of Epps Bridge Road going into the county county. So I guess I'm saying this, because I don't want the same thing to happen here, where we're like, oh, we should do something, and then like, what do we do?
Well, and to, I remember that, and it, we had multiple, and in the space of like, I don't know, felt like a couple of years. We had several applications at Epps Bridge, I think none of which made it. Neighbors came out and forced, a lot of people came out and forced, and so that's crazy to put that right on that road. And we haven't seen anything since, actually.
Right.
Like, and I don't know if anything happened with Epps Bridge Road, or even if. Yeah, I I mean, I think sometimes we can kind of make recommendations in the wind, and that may have been one of them.
And I think it was also around the time when we were getting recommendations for like Lexington Road and then the highway up and down. And like, there were just kind of things happening. We were like, yeah, we should do this too. And um, yeah, I I I think it's, it might be digging into a larger procedural issue of like, what can we really even do? And like, maybe this is also where the future land use map comes in, because maybe these studies are in some capacity reflected in that or not, and maybe we need to revive them when we get into the future land use map discussion, I don't know.
So um, there were times uh when we were about ten years, rather than twenty-five years removed from the county-wide rezon, where we had a series of studies. We had two corridor studies that we prepared, spent a lot of time, I think, put out. So I think it was a great product, of course, I think it was a great product. But I mean, there was a lot of public comment, a lot of staff resource put into it. And it was largely initiated by the planning commission, working with planning staff, planning, the planning department also has the ability to initiate studies, surveys. So um, what we have typically found through that experience is, those were moments where we were trying to do corridor-specific or district-specific or neighborhood-specific studies to look at unique context, or to try to do something that was gonna go a little bit beyond what the base level zoning code would accommodate. That's something we want to do again, but so much time has gone by from the adoption of that big lift that we did in two thousand. That it's time for that lift to occur again, and see how many things we can kind of fix jurisdiction-wide. Or at least set in a modern direction, a contemporary direction, and then do some of these finer-grain studies. So to answer the original question about where where does the basis come for this? So uh, with the crack research of our legal team sitting to your right. There is a code section that is outside of Title Nine, it's in Title Eight, that eight, chapter eight, one is all about you guys. It's all about the planning commission. And eight, one, three, subsection seven says the following. There we go. To conduct, well, okay, so the preamble statement is the Athens Clark County Planning Commission shall have the power and duty, number seven, to conduct surveys and studies of existing conditions and probable future developments, and to prepare and recommend to the mayor and commission any plans for physical, social, and economic growth as will best promote the public health, safety, order, convenience, aesthetics, prosperity, or the general welfare of Athens Clark County, Georgia. Okay, so that's, that's a nice thing to have in the code at your disposal. What you don't have the ability to do is to direct staff resources. And so where we have approached this cooperatively is to say, if this is something that you desire to do, we can look at our work program, we can slot it accordingly. Given that we have the big effort that we're going to report on next, um, with future land use, maybe what we'll do is, I'm offering this, we could take notes of the interest. And perhaps there would be maybe some communication amongst the planning commission to put a finer point on what those end outcomes are. Especially given the wording of that code section that that gives you guys some scope to work within. With a bit of scope and with an understanding of where our work program is moving in the next eighteen months to two years with text amendments for missing middle housing, efforts directed by the mayor and commission to do some other things to implement the outcomes of a future land use map. Maybe this folds in neatly to something that they're already gonna ask us to do. But if it doesn't, we would try to sequence it so that it doesn't lose track, but it happens at the right time. Does that, does that help? Then the outcome of that relates to chapter Title Nine and nine dash four, you guys have the ability to initiate text amendments. I'll just say it like that. So, study comes first, outcomes of that get presented to the mayor and commission. Direction can come from that, and then you can initiate text amendments that seek to implement the things that you found in your study.
That's the procedure. Well, so how would that relate to, relate to the overlay issue?
Right, so that's a text amendment.
Okay.
If you dissolve the overlay, that's a text amendment. If you modify the overlay, it's a text.
What's the procedure for that? We would come up with a text amendment and you all, you would have.
Study first.
Yeah.
Then text.
Okay, so we would say, we want to, we want to generally do text amendment, but as this, you all would come back to us with a bit of research and possibly like the proposed wording. Okay.
Well, but we'd have the, we'd do the study, we'd direct the study first.
Study first.
So we'd say, we want to look at this corridor between Lexington Road and, or or like just along Gainesville Road, for example, and like the impact of overlay, uh, traffic calming measures or, yeah.
Scope, so we have to have a little bit of scope of what we're studying, then we do the study. I would suggest with Gainesville Road Corridor, staff has spent a good bit of time looking into this over the last eighteen months. That corridor over the years has been really held down by the airport overlay. And as Max pointed out in his presentation, we've learned with airport administration that there are some opportunities for maybe lifting the lid a little bit, and with reason and justification. So depending on how the scope comes together, that may be one of the things that you investigate that wouldn't result in a text amendment necessarily, but might result in some new cooperative understanding with the airport authority on on understanding what FAA requirements are for that airport. And that particular runway, which is a different kind of runway than the east-west runway, how does it impact? That's a study, but it may not generate a text amendment. It may just generate policies, it may generate other marketing opportunities, it may just generate other things that are not text amendments, but still viable outcomes.
There are other corridors like that in the airport's overlay?
Not quite like that. Yeah, pretty unique, that it, that smaller aircraft overlay runs north-south, and the Gainesville Road Corridor is right in the middle of it, on the south side of that. And that aircraft, the operation of that aircraft is different. Their recovery time and space is less, and so the safety concerns are different.
Just out of curiosity, has, how has the airport overlay most affected development there? Like, what are their main concerns? Is it something that they haven't allowed?
It's, well, for instance, the the suggestion of a hospital. It was interesting that the hospital authority bought that property to build a hospital without really following that through to see how that does or doesn't work well with the airport overlay. Turns out it doesn't really work very well with the old airport overlay.
There's helicopters coming in and out.
So is that their specific reason, is other, is like helicopters coming in and out?
Oh, no.
I would think that they're worried about.
Yes.
The runway approaches.
That's right.
Are they worried about planes hitting stuff?
If there is a failure, it's not good to hit anything.
Yeah.
But the damage to a single-family home is different than the damage to a four or five-story hospital.
Yeah, or like a big apartment complex.
Or an apartment complex, or a school.
Is it about density then? They want to keep it like low density in order to keep from hitting things?
Low density, low height, low reflective.
Yeah, cause I know like lights and height and all that.
Right.
Dust, all that kind of stuff.
What's the change that was made though, a little while back, with a minimum acreage?
Yeah.
That was a pretty big change.
It was a big change, one acre minimum for single-family home, and the airport overlay was the standard we used to have.
Yeah.
And that was lifted so that the underlying zoning's lot size rule, rather than the one-acre size.
And that's just about density and crashes?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Just that least amount of bodies.
Yeah, yeah. But obviously, there's airports in other places that are, the runway approaches are over highly dense areas, you know?
So, do they be possible?
Places like, that are super densely populated.
Get, um, had like staff has been looking into this area for like the past eighteen months or so, like maybe unofficially, right?
Very officially, but as we're talking about the entire county, this is an area that we've discussed as opportunity for nodal development.
Yeah.
Fourth end as well as the south end, and how to reposition this for carrying capacity for 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 more density to housing, um, commercial redevelopment, that type of thing.
Cause what I'm, what I'm getting at is like, if if there's something that we could get as like, something to help us put that pin in it while these other things are are playing out, like to to, that we can maybe read up or catch up on what you all have been discussing, so that when we want to say, okay, we've got the future land use map, and here's some things happening. We want to initiate a study this, right? I I'm just trying to get like, like, so we can get some background and better direct like what the next steps would be.
Yeah. Maybe what we should do is have a work session opportunity with the planning commission to just talk about that exactly. Staff can can bring together some resources that we've taken into account. We can also try to clarify some of the things that we heard tonight. This group doesn't really regulate right-of-way. Right, so traffic signals?
Yeah.
Are in the right-of-way, but what do they do? They regulate development activity on either side of the right-of-way, so there is a nexus there. With these studies, we can reach beyond just zoning items. We can look into some things, and we can bring resources from other departments and help inform the study. So that's where that scope is so important, not just geography, but topically.
Yeah.
What what are we looking into? But we wouldn't, working with you guys, we wouldn't singularly develop a text amendment about traffic signalization or pedestrian facilities in the right-of-way. But transportation of public works might, Athens in motion might. And so that's where some of that coordination would make a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Okay. So, a long way around to say, we hear you, there is a way to do it. Right now would be really tough, and we're not really sure how to commit to any kind of timeline.
Yeah.
So the first thing is understanding a scope. Once we know a scope, then we can start to figure out what our resources look like in our prior commitments, for lack of a better way to put it. Cause we do have some things that are expected of us that we gotta get done. And, and when I say us, it's inclusive of, of the planning commission.
That's fair.
Okay. We enjoy doing those studies. I'll just say that. Staff really enjoys doing those studies. So you're, you don't have to convince us.
We give you permission to see what happened, but we.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, future land use steering committee chairs update.
Uh, let's see. Um, I always say this, I think, but I want to say it again. This committee is a dream chair. It is, people are so smart. They know what they're talking about. We have good discussions and we will wear out a few items, uh, going back and forth. It's not that everybody jumps in and goes, you know, this is great, let's do it. It's, it's a lot of, a lot of back and forth. Uh, I noticed we spent over an hour and a half on our fir- today here, um, on the first application. Uh, we can, we can, we can wear down two hours, uh, going, and that's, that's what I love to see. So I just sit back and I'll let them, let them be smart. And so I appreciate them, I appreciate staff's done to bring all of this together, because we go and do all of this, then they go back into their offices and make our discussion all nice and pretty, so we can understand it when it comes back. Um, but, uh, we are down to, without getting too specific on everything, we're down to just about Prince Avenue. We have gone all over this county, and we've got to work on that. And then we'll be reviewing everything we have done, because we have been, as we've talked about coloring the map now. The map is almost completely colored, uh, in beautiful colors. And so we'll do that next week. And that meeting will be, we are set for Wednesday at six o'clock. Is that correct? Is that, you know, that, that's, we're sticking with that. Um, and the end of that meeting, I decided, or talking to Bruce, that why don't we let the public give us a little input? Um, we're not really, we haven't gotten it out there, but it wouldn't hurt just to be as transparent as possible, early, always. And because in the meetings, we're not taking feedback like we do in a meeting like this. So, uh, we're, we're just our committee. So we'll do that. You're welcome to come to all our meetings, please do. And again, next Wednesday, six o'clock here. And we'll be reviewing everything we've done, because staff is taking everything in and bringing it back to what'll be almost a final deal. Then it'll go, um, again, out to the, it'll go on tour, as I say, uh, around where the general public gets to look at it and see and talk to and, and engage with, uh, staff and us and everyone. It'll eventually end up here. And y'all will see it. And as I understand, the, uh, planning commission will will do its version. Either they'll, hey, this is perfect, or this should change, and that becomes a new map that then goes to the mayor and commission. So, uh, you'll have time for all of that. But not carrying on too much, but interesting things, and I just want to say this, and I'll say it very lightly, because nothing is certain at this point. But, uh, the Gaines Lexington area was looked at very, uh, very, um, strongly. Uh, even looking at certain properties and going, what if that business was no longer there? Because we're looking 20 years in the future. We don't know. So we're doing things that, that make sure that the future land use of that isn't just based around what's there today, but what's, what's going to be there. And with, should that business leave, what would attract, uh, appropriately, uh, a, a good business there that brings up those areas. So it's, it's a lot of fun, a lot of detail, and we are, I see the daylight at the end of the tunnel. Um, finally, and, but, um, so that's, um, that's like just everything I need to mention. Do you have any further notes?
I'll segue into the planning director's report by piggybacking on what you're talking about. When one of the outcomes, once the future land use steering committee has arrived at a final map that they're endorsing, we're going to go through public review of that map. And, um, the road tours, as Alex was saying, we really want you guys involved. Um, actively involved. And we want you to be comfortable with what the map is, so that you can be actively involved. So the format for these types of meetings would be similar to what we had last fall, where there is a presentation, there is some slide work, but there's also just boards and the opportunity to go talk in one-on-one or in a small group and listen to people, and we'll have opportunities for, to record their feedback. Um, so to steer them towards actually engaging in that and providing their feedback is what we need help with. So having friendly faces to do that, having folks that are excited about the process but willing to listen and, and not oversell it, listen and explain. And, and make sure that we are leaving the door wide open for folks to express their concerns or their questions or anything about it. Um, every bit of those moments are important for us to get to the point of having an adopted new map. Um, so we need your help. Staff for staff, we enjoy this stuff, um, over staff, right? We understand that. You, you all are planning commissioners, residents of Athens Park County, you're neighbors of these people. So we want you to be a part of it as well, because that's going to make it stronger. So that would be.
A general timeframe of the road tour?
That, we're working on it right now. We know it's going to finish at the end of April. Our, our, our big final meeting of the next probably 10-meeting run is going to be at the library, I think April 30th is the date for the library that we've pinned down, so we know that date.
But that's going to be the last of them, is what you're saying?
For that run of comment, yes, between future land use steering committee and planning commission. That will be the last of that period of comment. Um, once it gets to the county commission, we may be asked to do all kinds of things. So we're, we're trying to build up to that. Urban Three comes to town May 7th and 8th. Yes, got that right? So, this public comment period is building up to Urban Three's arrival in town. So, we're hoping that what we're building is an understanding of future land use, the, the opportunity to kind of talk and listen and and raise that, that community intelligence level on the subject. So that when Joe Mina Kazi in his, his presentation is given, and we're going to have multiple formats and forums for that, everybody's in a much better place to receive the message and ask questions and, and push at it a little bit, because what he's going to do is going to sync up nicely with, with what the work with the future land use steering committee has been, which is what we're really excited about. Um, so that puts us kind of at the forefront of where we want to be public policy-wise. So that we can make it to the mayor and commission, have their confidence about the process. And that way the product can be the focus and not concerns about process. Let's make sure everybody's comfortable and confident that we've done this the right way, we've listened and we've incorporated people's feedback appropriately. Um, so that we can focus on the actual policy and what's on the map. Um, and do it with an eye towards economic efficiency as well as, um, community quality of life. We've always done a good job with community quality of life. We've not always factored in economics the way that, that we should, and certainly the way that we're going to do this time. You can tell we're geeked about it, right? So, anyway, we want you guys in on it. We, we want to have probably an opportunity to get you up to speed, so if you are able to attend next Wednesday evening, that would be a great opportunity to get familiar with how the process has worked, because you'll see a sample with the discussion with Prince Avenue. And you'll hear comment, we hope, a lot. We're going to try to get the word out so folks actively participate, and that'll help you all understand kind of the temperature in the room and what does the map look like and how did we get here? Okay.
Yeah, you said that's next Wednesday, six o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Um, if you, would you all please, um, staff communicate as soon as you know a schedule of one of those meetings, you could be, communicate. Would you just send us an email so we see all the dates?
Yeah.
And I just, I just wanted to join in the geekness of how actually exciting would be to have this done. Like, when I started in the planning commission, it was, I think, um, the summer of 2017, and I feel like our hands have been, that we've kind of been like operating in the dark in a lot of areas in town, um, because we don't really know what's the intention of this area. We sometimes have to make guesses. And so I highly, I mean, I think this is like kind of one of the coolest things we've done since I've been here. So I hope that you all can, it's a good way also to learn, even if you're kind of new to the commission, it's a good way to see what this is all about and, and give you a little bit of better underpinning of like how important the road concept and then future land use map are, because it underpins all of our zoning. So, anyway, I just, like, we'd get all you guys, we want to end.
We can share this, I think we'd like to wait till after Wednesday, when we've gotten through Prince Avenue, which is their final kind of inset area, and then we'll definitely share the story map we have with you all. Has a few pieces, has slider bars to go from current to future proposed, um, has slider bars to show, uh, Dariel versus the proposed future land use. So it has a few different tools on there for you guys to be able to look and see the changes that the steering committee's discussed and that we've tried to translate to the map on there. But I, I think we'd like to finish the last one on Prince Avenue first, and then that'll give you guys a month-ish amount of time before we're getting going in early April. So, if we had had a light agenda for April, we would have had a discussion, opportunity at the end of the meeting to go through the map. If we didn't have a 12-item agenda.
12 items?
Right.
12 items.
For a pizza.
That's what I was about to say. Like the schedule.
Yes, hello.
I ate a, been in breakfast.
Yeah.
Brunch.
So.
Meeting I'll start at 3:00 P.M.
Here's what I, here's what I'm, I'm really asking everyone, and, and for the folks that aren't here tonight, we can't lose form. We cannot lose form.
Because what would that do to the next one?
And the following is spring break.
Yeah, C-CSD is spring break.
Yeah, so, so please check calendars, check your schedules, make sure that you are here, because.
This is spring break in your records.
It's a regular meeting. There's something about the wording of Mark's email that April meetings not.
That's why I'm saying it out loud, because he, he worded it friendly. I'm being less friendly.
But, but.
Got to come, there's 12 things.
Yeah. Cannot bump them for now.
April 3rd.
It's on April 3rd.
Normal Thursday.
Your title limit.
Thursday of the month.
Uh huh.
No surprise, because we didn't pull any.
I don't have any great plans.
So, that's important. Um, when the map is available, though, I think an idea that struck me is maybe what we have is a drop-in opportunity for just planning commissioners. Not a called meeting, not talking about quorum, but just a time to come by if you have questions about what you're looking at. Some of the steering committee members, it took them a couple run-throughs using the story map to understand what the tools were. So, don't worry about your pride. Like, if there's something about that, and, and it helps us learn how to do it better, honestly. If it's not making sense to you, we'd love to sit next to you for 15, 20, 28 years, whatever, and talk you through it, so you are comfortable and you feel like you can talk about it confidently. But we'll set something up and you're always welcome to come by, but we'll maybe make a structured moment where we've got it set up in here and we can go through. That'd be good? Yeah. Um, that is it for the director's report. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other miscellaneous items, or I will in motion to Richard?
Make a motion to Richard.
All right, second. All right, all in favor? All right, so you guys.